Everyone ready?
Knock and roll.
Call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, June 21st, 2016. Is there anyone here to speak to something that is not on the agenda? All right. Planning Board meeting minutes from May 17th, 2016. Does anybody have any comments, questions, revisions?
Yeah, I do.
What's that?
Uh, every one of our, any one of, every one of our votes was five all. In fact, in matter, we have six people now voting, so we have six people, so it should be six all. So either that or one's gonna drop out and not vote.
It depends, 'cause Jim, as an associate, doesn't actually have an official vote. He's, his role as associate is to sub in during special permits.
Okay.
Um, if there isn't a quorum of the other members, and he needs to, in a minimum, we need a four, four member present for all special permits, 'cause you have to have a super majority vote. So, on administrative items, I think the planning rules and regulations give the associate the ability to vote on administrative matters, but if it's something that's a site plan approval, and there's three members of the board here, Jim is participating and he's here, and it's, it's awesome that he comes to every single meeting and he knows what's going on, um, but his vote doesn't actually technically count under site plan approval. Unless the board wanted to review its rules and regulations and change that, um, in the future.
Well, it does seem kinda funny, we got six people voting, but we got a five all vote, that's all. That's not why you think that was brand agreement, that's all.
Okay. But, but for the reflection of the minutes, he's not an official member of the planning board, he's an associate, so.
Even for things like the minutes on the motion to adjourn?
Um, no, that stuff is administrative and he could be voting. If he was present, was everybody present at the last meeting?
Yeah, it looks like it.
Yeah, the first time we had six.
Okay. So we can fix that for the administrative items, but if it's, um, and even for special permits, if there's a quorum of the board here, technically his vote doesn't count, and if you see at the decisions that I send out, I list him as being present, but I don't count a vote for him, whether it's yea or nay, it's a dashed line on the decision. So it show, it reflects in terms of the meeting that he was here, and he listened, and he asked questions, and he participated, but his vote doesn't technically count at the end. Which seems silly, but that's the way the state law is.
Right.
I feel guilty.
You're a person.
Just so you know.
Right.
I feel you're a person.
All right. Anything else? Okay.
I motion to approve the minutes from, may the date, may the date.
May 17th.
May 17th.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? None. All right. Moving on, we have an A and R for 40 Ballard Street. Someone here for that? Mark?
Evening.
Good evening.
Nate McPhee from Heritage Surveys, representing Ann and David Zawacki, who own property on Ballard Street, at the intersection of Lyman Road. And, um, this is an A and R plan to subdivide the lot into three parcels. The first parcel is parcel A, which has 2.7 acres of land, which contains the existing dwelling, shed and barn. Parcel B is a new building lot, which has a width of 125 feet. The zoning is R15, which is 100, so there's 25 feet extra. So that's got 42,018 square feet. And then parcel C is the remaining portion of the land, which is 3.78 acres of land. And that's got 648 feet of frontage.
That's the frontage. Can I ask, in no way affect a potential endorsement, but is it your intention to subdivide that in the future?
Uh, probably not. A good portion of this is a wet meadow. This is a large farm field that has been farmed and hayed over the years. Um, and Ballard Street, the intersection is up high, and Ballard Street comes down to a low point. Um, about here, there's an intermittent brook that crosses over and goes down between Abashans and the apartment complex on North Hampton Street. So this is a wet meadow, so that, um, maybe somebody would wanna farm it, and it'd be subdivided that way, 'cause under farming, you can still farm wet meadows, but for housing, no.
Planning Department have any comments? No? All right.
I motion to endorse the approval not required for 40 Ballard Street.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right.
Sorry, Jim.
No, no, no.
And I, so I have seven prints, so you want six, right?
So, yeah, so you take the Mylar and-
One print.
-one copy signed.
Yep.
Should go back to you and the applicant. Um, and then we'll need one, a signed one for the clerk's office, and a signed one for the planning department, and the rest don't have to be signed. So, the Mylar and three copies, and then the rest, I can just distribute internally. Assessors and city engineer.
All right, there's the Mylar copy, too. I need how many copies?
I think three is what I just came up with, right?
Three more?
Yes.
This happens every time we have an A and R, I have to like run through the list.
And then, assessors?
Uh, the assessors doesn't need a signed copy, they just need it for their own personal reference, and same with the city engineer. The clerk needs a signed copy, planning needs a signed copy. And then sign for the applicant.
All right. Do you want the unsigned ones back, or? Jessica's gonna keep those.
I'll keep everything.
All right.
Mark, do you know, if, do you have any sense of, um, in terms of filing this, are they waiting for the sales to go through?
Yes.
And then it will get filed this year?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Yes, it will.
All right.
Yeah, they have an agreement on the official house. That closes, so.
Okay.
Record the plan.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
All right, moving on to new business, site plan approval amendment for 123 Union Street. Good evening. Wanna give us a brief description of what's going on here?
Sure, just looking to clarify, the first floor was approved for the block building in the retail, might have just had professional space to add options, so it's retail or professional.
I know, the gentleman's great for our community, but the camera might not.
Oh, can you just identify yourself for the record?
Sure, Kevin Perry with Orange Brown.
Thank you. Um, okay, so originally, just looking at the original site plan approval, it was retail on the first floor, ops professional space on the second floor. And then we added the third floor for ops professional space as well with an amendment, uh, last year, right? Wow, two years ago. Um, okay, so now you're just trying to clarify that the first floor would also be, um, office professional as well?
Correct.
Okay. But also, um, maintaining the retail?
Yeah, we have four suites down there, one of which was just leased, would be professional space. Um, the other three get to be leased, so, um, leave it open for retail or professional.
And anything else changing with the general use structure, or anything like that?
No.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Do you anticipate that this will affect parking in any way?
Uh, I mean, it's gonna add some parking, I would assume. I mean, what was originally in there was the furniture store, it was there for about a year, and then we had the haunted house, which was very high impact for five weeks and zero impact of our major. Uh, so it'll be a little steadier now. But, uh, this stuff is saying, goes in there, we've had no parking issues so far back there, we've always had at least enough spots, I think. We have about 50 space here.
Is the haunted house no longer going to be there? They're leaving?
No, he, uh-
Oh, okay.
He didn't make it last year, so he moved out a few months, so that's why we're subdividing it.
Oh, I see, okay.
Into four suites, the largest of which the front one's presently leased, and three smaller ones left.
I don't look through it.
Also, what I saw in there, I really don't have too many questions, that most of them were, were answered, we might wanna kinda go through some, just to show that we're doing due diligence, but really, it seems in line with the, with the purpose.
I mean, I don't think the retail, the switch from retail to retail professional's gonna impact any of those considerations, but we can go through it.
The, well, it's downtown business, so there's no, actually, no industrial zone, so there's no off-street parking requirements in that zone.
Right.
And we don't really know who's moving in, so it's not like we can talk to specific trash requirements, or any, you know.
Right. I mean, it seems to me that the uses are gonna be more comparable, whether they're retail or professional.
Lighting on the building was already covered, I mean, I really don't see anything.
That'd be my thought. Unless you guys have any questions. All right.
I motion to approve the site plan amendment for 123 Union Street.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll draft a decision shortly, and send it to you.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, have a good night. Sad to hear about the compromise.
All right. Old business, sign ordinance. It's already generating groans.
I don't, I just don't know if I've got like the capacity for it tonight, but we'll do it anyway. Uh, what did I do with, I had extra copies.
Do you want mine, Jessica?
No, I have some here. Um, what did I do with that? Oh, here they are. Does anybody need a copy? I feel like everybody has copies, or mailed copies, or, is it their own? Okay, all right.
I got it.
Okay, so, from the top. Let's pull up the latest version. So, jumping to... Trying to remember where I left off. Uh, so I guess the 10.08 enforcement?
Yeah.
I can't remember, I don't think this, this is, I think this is all new, which is why it's in red. This is why you packed images to remind myself what I've done. Okay, um, so we had talked about that last time, and the board decided that to put in, anyone aggrieved by a decision of the building commissioner, in regards to the sign permit, may appeal to the zoning board of appeals within 30 days of the issuance or denial of the sign permit. So, oh, that's, I moved that. So that was somewhere else, and I moved it up there. That's what I did. Maybe I should pull up the old version, so I can compare.
Did we confirm that that was the appeal period for like, other building commissioner decisions?
No.
Or is it different?
I can, I think it's, I'll confirm. I feel like it's consistent, but-
I'm just curious, I mean, 30 days seems like a reasonable window, but if everything else is 21 or-
Yep.
-45, I mean-
Consistency.
Okay. I will confirm that.
And it may be different for different decisions, I don't remember.
Right. Um, okay, so, under enforcement, we have maintenance and removal. So, it's currently reads, "Every sign shall be maintained in good structural conditions at all time. All signs shall be kept neatly painted, including all metal parts and supports thereof that are not galvanized or of rust-resistant material. The building commissioner or the zoning enforcement officer shall inspect and shall have the authority to order the painting, repair, alteration, or removal of a sign, which shall constitute a hazard to safety, health, or public welfare by reason of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, or obsolescence." Period.
Do we have a zoning enforcement officer other than our building inspector?
No, that's it, he's it.
Okay. So do we need that, or is that?
So what it's, last time, the enforcement section, uh, or last time, in our, in our current ordinance, it's pretty small. And, the enforcement reads, "Enforcement will provide instruction guidance and first offense warning with the opportunity for violation to be corrected prior to any fines. That the zoning enforcement officer shall be responsible for enforcements of this ordinance. As stated within this ordinance, the zoning enforcement officer or designee has the authority to remove any temporary sign unlawfully placed on public property without notice. And that the zoning enforcement officer with approval of the mayor shall develop a specific policy for the permitting of permanent and temporary signs, and shall annually review the fee schedule, making adjustments when necessary."
That's from what we have in place right now?
Yep. There's no policy in place, that was never developed.
Okay, and so, I mean, so do we just wanna say the building commissioner shall inspect, or?
Um, well, he's the authority, I mean, it's, it's already-
I mean, do we wanna say, or the zoning enforcement officer, when, I don't actually think we have anybody that, that he is our zoning enforcement officer, right?
He is it.
But that might change. I mean, maybe it won't, I don't know, but-
We could take out the zoning, and just say the building commissioner. See, in the other one, which, he loves the ability to designate anybody, so if somebody comes in and says, um, like, I'm trying to think of, you know those signs, it's like singles, looking for other singles in East Hampton, and they put 'em on like, every telephone pole-
Yep.
-in town, and they put 'em everywhere, and somebody will come in and say, "Oh my gosh, you know, these are all over the place." He'll say, "Great, I designate you to go ahead and take them down."
So what if we say the building commissioner or-
Designee.
Designing name.
That's what I'm getting at, 'cause he loves that ability to say, "I don't have time for this."
The flip side of that, right, is that then you've got the building commissioner, who is just saying to a random person, "Now, you can go and check out Eastworks and tell me if they apply, approve or not."
Well, and to be quite honest, a lot of the political hubbub that happened the last time this was reviewed, was because he designated somebody-
Right.
-to start enforcing signs that had not been enforced, and it caused a huge rift in the community.
Right.
So... So, because that individual had come in and said, "This person's violating the sign ordinance, and this person's violating the sign ordinance," and he said, "Great, go ahead and enforce it."
Right. So that, I mean, that part, it seems to me like, I mean, a zoning enforcement officer, building commissioner, is a-
Professional.
It's a professional position that's approved by the government, and you know-
Right.
-it's not just a haphazard role.
Right.
And while I would love to help him out by giving somebody else a chance to go grab it, I mean, I would say, if you know what it is, and you're just taking something off a telephone pole, that that's not really something that you need to be the zoning enforcement officer for, anyway.
Right.
And you don't need to formally designate them, but that would just be-
I think we need to leave the ability to, for them to delegate personally, because I mean, something could happen where they might need assistance, and I wouldn't wanna remove that. But I think, too, that, you know, there is a risk that, I don't know, I think we have to assume that our building commissioner has learned from this experience, and will do a good job. We can't always assume another building commissioner would, would, excuse me, but then again, maybe we have to, 'cause that's why they're hired.
Right, and, and remember, that zoning ordinances usually last longer than the actual individuals in these positions.
Right.
So, just because his personality is such, think of that, think of this as whatever you're crafting, it's not just for who's in that position right now, it's for whoever will be in that position for the next-
For your worst-case scenario, who's in that position, really. But I mean, I think, it's not really something where you need to have somebody 24 hours a day, 365, like, if something happens to our building commissioner, and, you know, let's go with the lottery instead of the bus hitting them, right? And we don't have a building commissioner on Monday morning, we will have one, or someone acting as a building commissioner-
Absolutely.
...relatively quickly, and if we have an interim period of a week with no one out on the streets enforcing it, it's not one of the things that we need, somebody, you know, at the switch every day, if that happens. So I'm, I'm more inclined to avoid, especially because of the way people got burned before, I'm a little wary of the sort of carte blanche to designate any random person as a zoning enforcement officer, but-
I still feel that we need to leave delegation in there, and I feel like your analogy of those flyers being posted all over the street signs, someone could come through and put a thousand of them, you know, and have staff for some show, and it could be littered all over our town, and it might be a bigger job than our building commissioner can handle without saying, you know, "I need a couple people to come help me remove these."
But that's when he goes to the mayor and says, "I need help," or "I need," you know, he shouldn't be making those determinations on his own. He reports to the mayor, who is in charge of the city, and is in charge of the staff who work in this building, and, um-
It's also, I mean, that's somebody acting on his behalf, it's not like a designee, so like, that's no different than like, if he has to go remove the sign from the side of Eastworks, and he hires somebody who's using a lift, so that he can get up there. I mean, it's not like he has to physically do it all. He's the one making the determination, this sign comes down. So he's the one who would say, "These smile signs are, you know, a hazard to our town and need to be removed." And then people pick 'em up. I don't think he's like obligated to perform every task in connection with that personally. I think telling somebody to pick 'em up off the street, or tear 'em off your telephone pole if you see them is just sort of somebody-
Well, it does say here, have the authority to order the alteration removal, it doesn't say he's actually doing it.
Right, he's making the determination.
Okay, so in that context, I think you're right, and I rescind my statement, because it, I thought that they were the only one that had the authority to do it, but in this case, it's the authority to order it.
Right.
But what we're saying here is, they're the one that has the authority to order, 'cause you said they had to go to the mayor a moment ago, Jessica, and I just wanna bring that up again, but they, he doesn't.
He doesn't, no.
If he wants to get help.
If he wants to get help, he just can't hire people up, you know what I mean?
Got it.
That's what I'm getting at. If there's a staffing-
So are you suggesting that it says the building commissioner shall inspect, and you strike or the zoning enforcement?
It sounds to me like that's just redundant and a little confusing, like, 'cause you don't actually have one, but it, I don't know. I mean, I suppose if we ever add that position, we're gonna have to go back and alter a lot of our bylaws, anyway. But-
So strike it?
Strike it?
Okay.
Same as well.
And the only other thing I could think of is something like a, or duly appointed staff under the zoning commissioner, which is ridiculous, just strike it.
I think if we have somebody else, like, even if he wins the lottery, someone will be appointed as the acting building commissioner, and they'll have the rights and responsibilities of building commissioner.
Strike it.
Okay, moving on to abandoned signs.
Oh, that's what we're here for, I have fun with this.
"If a nonconforming sign associated with a permitted use or structure has been abandoned for no less than two years, and that the structure has not been occupied for two years, then the nonconforming sign shall be removed and its nonconformity shall not continue." Seems confusing, now that I'm reading it now.
Yeah, that's a lot, right. Well, first of all, we can get rid of "and it's nonconforming, shall not continue," right? We don't care what happens with the nonconformity, the sign's coming down.
Shall be removed.
Right? So you can end it there, first one.
But what you're saying there is that not only shall the sign be removed, but it can't be replaced with something that is equally nonconforming?
Is, so that, that's what your intention is, right? Yes. Let's see what we say about abandoned signs in our current ordinance.
And, "Shall be removed, and any replacement sign shall conform to sign ordinance."
Okay, so our current nonconforming signs section, which is, not, it's not abandoned signs, but nonconforming signs, so, continuance, "A nonconforming sign lawfully existing at the time of adoption or subsequent amendment of this ordinance may continue, although such sign does not conform with the provisions of this ordinance." And, so it's saying that if it's, so this, it's a little bit-
There's really two things here, right? Like, abandoned signs is any sign that's not used for, the building isn't occupied for two years, right?
Right.
And, those can be removed. And then, in the event it's a nonconforming sign-
So they're, we're talking different things.
Right.
So, that's why I'm, I'm looking for abandonment under, here we go, abandonment of a nonconforming sign. "If a nonconforming sign associated with the permitted use of structure has been abandoned for no less than two years, i.e. the structure has not been occupied for two years, then the nonconforming sign shall be removed and its nonconformity shall not continue." It's exactly the same.
Okay.
So the way that it's currently organized is, is a whole section on nonconforming signs, and there's a bit on continuance, replacement, and abandonment, which we can copy, and we can use that nonconforming section and find a home for it here, and I take out that abandoned sign section.
Well, I guess practically speaking, right, if, if it's a conforming sign, there's no reason you'd order its removal.
I have a nonconforming sign section at the end.
Except that it's abandoned, in this particular case.
Right, but so, but so imagine, in that scenario, you tear down the sign, because no one's been in the building for two years, because it's a conforming sign, someone could just come back and put the sign back up, like, it doesn't really accomplish anything, right? So it really is only the nonconforming sign that becomes an issue for abandonment, 'cause it's not within what we want all signs to be.
Right, so think of it this way, here's an example. Uh, there's a store that has a really big sign, that used to be conforming to the sign ordinance, and now the sign ordinance has shrunk that size, size down. So, say it's a retailer, and one retailer moves out, and another retailer moves in. Let's use a video store, 'cause they don't exist anymore.
Right.
So, one video store moves out, they have this huge sign, another video store moves in, no, let's put it this way, two years, no more video stores, right?
Right.
So somebody else wants to come in, and they wanna use that space, and they wanna be able to put their sign up for their yo-yo store-
As big as possible.
-that, that's as big as the video store.
Right.
And, maybe I made it more confusing, but-
No, no.
Why should they? Shouldn't the framework for the, the sign still exist?
Right. But the, but that video store has been vacant for over two years, so-
So that's the, that's the hair we're splitting, right? Is so that if the yo-yo store buys the Blockbuster, and just replaces Blockbuster Video with Jim's Yo-Yo Store-
Right.
-that's legitimate.
If it's within the two years.
Right, if they just buy the store right there, and they've been operating, they change it tomorrow, but if it's unoccupied for two years and they buy it, they can't use the sign.
Right.
That's weird. So if you buy it in a year and a half, you can continue the nonconformity.
But abandonment is pretty typical for the two years.
Right.
The two years is, is kind of, um, like, for instance, say, I don't know, okay, there was a grocery store, and then, you don't have to come for permits if the use in that space was exactly the same within a two-year window. After two years, then it sort of, it starts to change things a little bit.
Well, and like, the ability to act on the special permits, right? You can sit and do nothing usually for two years.
Right.
It's sort of-
Actually makes it an incentive for a quick turnaround in sales of a-
Well, it does, too, I mean, the other thing that I think often makes people uncomfortable is that like, the idea of zoning in general, is all these things that predate when we put this sign ordinance, and we want all those signs to be in compliance with our, our new bylaw, and so people can continue to use them, but you sort of make scenarios where they can all eventually be brought into compliance-
Right, over time.
-through some sort of conditions, eventually.
I'm actually fine with this the way it's ordered, it makes sense to me.
So, what, what about-
So the question is, is should that abandoned sign, should we model what is existing in our current ordinance by having a nonconforming sign section, and having continuance, replacement, and abandonment?
So separate the two concepts of conformity and abandonment.
'Cause right now, if you go, if you jump to section 10.86-
Mm-hmm.
-we have a nonconforming sign section, saying, "Any nonconforming sign lawfully existing at the time of adoption of this or subsequent amendments to this section is subject to the following standards. A nonconforming, nonconforming sign accessory to a use or uses shall be removed or replaced concurrently with any expansion of such use or uses. Such nonconforming signs shall be replaced with conforming sign or signs prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit or any building into which the use or uses are to be expanded."
So they don't have two years, if they're doing any kind of work.
If you're replacing it.
Well, it's a building permit, right? Or occupancy permit.
An occupancy permit. So, okay, let's break it down. So, nonconforming sign, accessory to a use, shall be removed or replaced with the expansion of that use.
Mm-hmm.
"Such nonconforming signs shall be replaced with a conforming sign, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit or any building into which the use or uses are to be expanded."
Is the expansion of a use really like a term of art? That seems a little different than what we usually talk about.
Yeah.
Like, I would say it's like a different use, or something like that.
Okay.
Altered.
Well, an altered use, expansion of a use is like-
Does that make sense to you?
Right, and I don't know if we have any parcels that this really applies to, but, you know, say somebody decides to put on a 10,000 square foot addition to their business and expand it, and they've been working under a, this is how I'm interpreting this, is that they've got a, um, that they have an nonconforming sign, 'cause their business has been in place since, let's say, 1935, and now they're deciding to put on a 10,000 square foot expansion.
Almost like increasing the nonconformance kind of concept in a structure.
Um, so, they, the sign has to now be brought into conformity, because they've done this expansion for their building.
Okay, so it's-
Maybe that's not fair, maybe, I mean, again, I'm pulling this stuff out of models, I'm not coming up with it on my own, so-
I thought it was gonna be like, a, a different use, like, a different class of use, so you've got a grocery store with a huge Biggie sign out in front, and somebody buys it and turns it into a doctor's office, and the sign then changes. I guess those are two different scenarios, right? One is Biggie's doubles their size, and one is they change business.
Which sign I think is actually conforming.
I don't, I'm just, I'm just-
Just for the record.
I'm just disparaging local businesses at a random here. No, but, so, a sign, you know, you can either change use or expand your footprint.
There's, I guess, two different things.
Right.
And maybe, and maybe we, maybe, maybe the board doesn't care whether a business that's been around forever decides to expand, and you, it's fine leaving their nonconforming sign in place.
I mean, you might take something like, uh, Eastworks, they have that gigantic big sign.
But they went to the ZBA and got permission to do that.
Yeah.
They got a variance to do that.
All this is still, you could, you could get a variance to, to go around that.
Well, it's not a very, we've-
I'm gonna try to make it a little more rational.
We're trying to, if you remember, we talked about findings, so that's going back to that findings part of- We're trying to, if you remember, we talked about findings, so that's going back to that findings part of what are the things that you would allow under granting a larger sign? And we had talked about some of that stuff last time, and we'll get to it again, but-
So, getting back to the abandoned sign concept, my only issue is, I don't know that that section is entirely clear that... I'm imagining scenarios where a business is unoccupied for a couple of years and no one really makes the effort to go and tell them, like, take down that sign.
Right.
And I think under the bylaw, what it says is that you can't continue to use that. So I'm trying to separate the fact that if it's abandoned, we can order it removed, from the fact that the nonconformity doesn't continue.
So maybe it's what, maybe you do want to separate them out into two separate sections?
Right, so maybe it says in the abandoned one, you know, basically what it says here, with a period at "removed", and then you deal with the fact that the nonconformity can't continue when you're talking about the nonconforming signs. I don't want somebody, like, I don't want, first of all, all of us to have to, like, be ordering the removal of the signs necessarily to somehow prove that you can't continue the nonconformity. That seems-
It's, the way this is worded is very much tied up in nonconformity beginning and end. I mean, they're, they're talking only about abandoned, nonconforming signs. As near as I can tell, abandoned signs that are conforming aren't even dealt with in the abandoned section.
Right.
Harry?
There's a sign on Union Street, it's been here for about at least 20 years, that, that's been, and there's no business there. There's a sign's right under front of the building, so what would you do with something like that?
Which, which one? Can you speak? So I have context?
I believe it's right across in the button building, you know, that, uh-
Oh, hurry and scurry.
Hurry and scurry.
Right, so that's one where I actually was thinking of that as one that's like conforming, like, I don't know that it's conforming, but assume a building like that has a conforming sign, like, it doesn't really help anybody to go order the removal of the sign, right? I can't imagine that that really is something that, I mean, do you want the authority to, to order the removal of a, of a conforming sign? Just for, I mean, that seems like such a weird scenario, and especially because the owner could come back and put up another conforming sign, even if it's unoccupied, it seems like that's still their right, so-
There's no, there's no business there, though.
There's no, well, I mean, you could talk about whether or not the building should be there or not, but, I mean, there's nothing you can do.
There's no business inside the building. It may have a sign out there.
So, let's flip it on its head, though, what if that sign is nonconforming?
Well, that's the scenario here, right? So if it's, if it's abandoned for two years, and it's a nonconforming sign, then under this language, you could order it removed, and regardless of whether you order it removed, then a new business that goes in there can't have a nonconforming sign. I mean, that's the point I would want to make clear.
Which seems to be exactly what's said here.
I'm, I'm only a little nervous by how it's tied with the removal. I'm, I'm trying to imagine a scenario where it's not removed, but-
How about, how about we just don't talk about the removal part and talk about what's more important is not continuing the nonconformity?
That probably works in 99% of the times, except the hurry and scurry or whatever, where something's sitting there and has an eyesore, nonconforming sign, but I don't know.
But it's not just the sign that's an eyesore.
No, I know, and, and an abandoned building for two years, that's gonna be true in all of them, probably.
Right.
Well, it says, the language here says, "In that structure has not been occupied for two years, then the nonconforming sign shall be removed."
Right.
Maybe instead of "shall", given the, because the question is who, you know, we don't-
The building commissioner may order its removal, and its nonconformity shall not continue.
Bingo.
Okay, what'd you just say? The-
After that "two years comma", then the building commissioner may order its removal.
May order its removal.
And its nonconformity shall not continue.
Do we need to get into the public health, safety, and welfare aspect of it, of "may order its removal"? I mean, I don't want somebody to arbitrarily feel like that one needs to come down, but that one can stay.
I know.
I don't have a problem with adding in, you know, "may order its removal" for the purposes of public safety, or, I mean, what are the causes that might-
Well, there's the maintenance and removal, which is above it, which says that, you know, that if it's a hazard to health, to safety, health, or public welfare.
Honestly, you could do it under that section already, right?
Right.
You don't need the abandonment. And if it doesn't fall under that section, if it's a well-maintained, imagine somebody's coming back and painting it and keeping it clean-
Right.
On business that no one's in. Do we really give the authority to the building commissioner to tear down that sign just because no one's been in there?
Seems a bit goofy.
It does. I, 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 I mean, the problem with all this is you can't really imagine the scenario for it, but you know someday you're gonna be looking around going, "Why didn't we give authority to tear down that sign?" but... So, yeah, I mean, I guess maybe the removal part isn't... Maybe, maybe you're right, Jessica, that the removal part is irrelevant. It really is that the nonconformity shall not continue.
Although we're asking for its removal now, it's not being enforced, but currently it says, "If a nonconforming sign-"
Says the same exact thing, right?
Uh, mostly. Associated with a permitted use or structure, instead of "of" structure, has been abandoned for no less than two years, and says, "in, in that", instead of the "ie", "has not been occupied for two years."
I think we've got it with that language that he added, and then add in again, identically what you've put here under maintenance, which is, which may constitute a hazard to safety, health, public welfare by reason, or-
So the building commissioner may order the removal of the sign, may order the sign shall be removed.
May order its removal based on- It just seems like we're getting so wordy.
But even if it's not abandoned, Jim, if it meets those requirements, you can just order it removed under the maintenance and removal, right?
I mean, so, I mean, are you saying just scratch this whole section because it's redundant?
I'm saying, scratch the part about removing it. So you would just say, "If it has not been occupied for two years, its nonconformity shall not continue."
I'm good.
Okay, so now we're scratching it and taking out the new language that you proposed?
And then the question is whether, I mean, I guess that goes under abandonment and not nonconforming signs.
I think it's good to keep that separate.
Can we run through the sentence again, please?
It's easier now.
We only changed it like five times.
I think it's, like, up to the nonconforming sign, um, is all the same as it's written here.
Uh, so, all the way to the "two years comma", and then the next, then it goes straight to "its nonconformity shall not continue."
So, it now reads, "If a nonconforming sign associated with a permitted use or structure has been abandoned for no less than two years, in that the structure has not been occupied for two years, its noncon, its nonconformity shall not continue."
I thought Jesse just took out the, "in that the structure has not been-"
No, it was the second "two years comma". That's not a very good landmark for me to have given you.
Okay.
So, you're right.
All right, second.
Oh, that sentence doesn't sound very good either, though.
Should I go back with the "ie"? It actually seems to help.
"ie" I actually think reads better, but... I guess that's right. It's just declaring that it's no longer, it no longer has the protection of being a nonconforming sign.
And then, frankly, if you're doing that, I think you should take the whole thing and stick it as a C under 10.08.6.
I agree.
I think that makes sense.
Okay. Oy, move to Okay. Phew, moving on?
I think I'm headway.
Dangerous or defective signs. No person shall maintain or permit to be, or permit to be maintained, blah, 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 this doesn't read right. No person shall maintain or permit to be maintained on any premises owned or controlled by them, any sign which is in, which is in a dangerous or defective condition. Any such sign shall be removed or repaired by the owner of the sign or the owner of the premises.
When?
All right, clearly I wrote all of this before cultural chaos and crime was not really-
Wouldn't that all fall under the regular maintenance and removal section above, though? I mean, if you, if 10.81 provides sort of a broad authority to order the painting repair, alteration, and removal of a sign which constitutes a hazard to safety, health, or public welfare.
We could just take it out.
I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to think of what.
It's interesting here, the one thing that stands out to me, and I agree with you overall that it seems redundant, but the one thing that stands out is that the removal, removal or repair is by the owner of the sign. It states that, whereas in the maintenance section, it doesn't, it says that they have the authority to order it, but it doesn't say who's gonna do it. I, I mean, what if, uh, what if someone comes and says, "Well, I've been ordered to remove this, so, you know, here's my bill."
Right, you pay for it, city. You're telling me to take it down.
You know what I mean? I, that, that part seems like it's an important, I mean, just that one piece.
As in, who's responsible for each sign? I mean, I think that's a dispute between the property owner and their tenant in that scenario.
So, we can just take that last sentence, though? Um, "Any such sign shall be removed or repaired by the owner of the sign or the owner of the premises", and move that under the last, make that the last sentence of
Maintenance and removal.
Maintenance and removal.
But that gives options. That, that's... That makes me more nervous. I mean, I'm, I'm more inclined, like, anytime the building commissioner's gonna make an order, they're just gonna order the property owner or the tenant or both of them, remove the sign. And if the landlord has a lease with a tenant that makes them responsible, they do, or they don't, but eventually-
Well, it says either it's to repaired by the owner of the sign or the owner of the premise, so let them figure out who's gonna deal with it. It's not the city's responsibility to get involved in those private-
Oh, no, that's what I'm saying, but I, but I don't know, the, then the bylaw has the alternative, so if I'm the sign owner, I then have language in the bylaw where I say it's the building owner, property owner, that's required to. But I don't know what, I mean, like, building commissioners will typically just send that stuff to the property owner and the address, I mean. But...
So, you're suggesting, and, and I think there's more debate here, definitely, but you're suggesting, right after dilapidation or obsolescence in 10.08.1, maintenance and removal, right after that last sentence, adding a sentence, "Any such sign shall be removed or repaired by the owner of the sign or the owner of the premises", and deleting 10.08.3 for otherwise being redundant. And the only thing then being is that dangerous or defective signs are already covered in maintenance and removal, but we're adding in, in maintenance and removal, a specification that the city isn't paying for this maintenance or removal.
Yeah.
Frankly, I think belongs.
Yeah, I mean, the city's not gonna pay for it, although, I mean, the thing is, the city can, in situations like this where you order a private party to do something, you can then, the city can elect to do it, and then make them pay for it. I mean, that's an option that a city has too, but, I mean, I think that, yeah, I guess that, that sentence can go up there.
Do you want to move it for now? Nothing's set in stone. I mean, we can always-
Oh, yeah, I mean-
Change it.
Yeah, let's do that. That makes sense.
Okay, so that last sentence on "any such sign", take that and move it?
Yeah.
Is that what you guys agreed to?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then take out the rest on the dangerous or defective signs part?
Yeah, I think that all falls under the one above, but-
Okay.
Do we change the caption on that, the title for that? Maintenance or removal, dangerous or defective signs?
No, we can just say, no.
No.
Just leave it as is.
Okay.
All right. So the only section under enforcement is this maintenance and removal.
Okay.
Unless there's other things we wanna... I might just, just to, because I, I don't like headers that only have one paragraph. I think that's weird.
Yeah.
So, um, I might just leave the enforcement. I don't know, I might take that "anyone agreed" part and make that a new one.
We still have "removal of signs by building commissioner" and "appeals" under there too, right?
That's a different one.
Uh, yeah, no, you're right, you're right. You're right.
And, and "nonconforming" on the next page.
Okay, we're all right. Okay. So, moving on. Um, appeals. So, we had talked about last time, adding that a special permit may be sought when unusual site conditions warrant sign standards. So, there's just some changes there.
What's the yellow highlight?
I just left that because you had not decided what you wanted to do, but you liked it, but you weren't sure whether, what, the details of it, so it's just highlighted as we have to go back and look at it at some point, but you liked it enough to keep it in there, but it's not finalized.
All right. Sounds good. I'm sure we had a great reason.
Well, you were talking, you wanted to sort of go through the, um, actual design aspects of it first, and then come back-
I think that makes sense.
And then review that once you've gone through that process. Um, findings. So, a lot of this we talked about, and I just left it. Um, I think I may have deleted some stuff. I can't, of course, it would be in here. So, uh, there are, so, "A special permit may be issued by the ZBA if there's exceptional or extraordinary conditions applying to land, buildings, uses, or signs involved, which do not generally apply to other land, buildings, or signs in the neighborhood, such as, but not limited to, the presence of illegal, nonconforming structure, visual obstructions, unusual building location on site, or unusual building design, architectural style, or historic significance. The requested signs are consistent with the purpose and intent of the sign ordinance and will not constitute a grant of special privilege or entitlement, inconsistent with the limitations applied to other properties in the vicinity with the same zoning." Now, I don't know why I-
What does that mean?
I love that sentence.
Um-
I mean, isn't by definition that's what we're doing? I mean, this, this is like-
I have to remember where I got that from. I must have pulled it from somewhere.
Basically, I think that's saying you can't ask for something outside of what's in this document, which is redundant, isn't redundant, maybe. Findings. Oh, it's findings here, so we're talking about things that-
It's the standard for a special permit.
So, I don't, I don't, I can't remember where I got this from, I'm sorry. Um, life before cultural chaos was a little much of a blur. Um, so, uh, I pulled it from somewhere, obviously. I put it in there for you to talk about, for some, you know. I think that's why it's highlighted in yellow, because the rest of this we reviewed at the last meeting.
Yeah.
But you hadn't agreed to it yet, so I just left it as read, so that must be new language that I threw in there. I'm pretty sure. Um-
Limitations applied to other, so, you can't have something that other people around you-
But that's specifically what the special permit is for.
Right.
It's that, you, you're looking for something beyond what the bylaw allows. You want a grant of special privilege or entitlement that's actually inconsistent with-
But I, but it, but I think the other reading could be, but it can't be so grossly out of whack with what's in the neighborhood that, um, that if everybody in the neighborhood decided that they wanted this, that it would, I don't know. I think that's sort of what it's getting at, that it, that there's almost like a scale issue, or there's a-
Or like, so they're taking into account that there are other nonconforming signs in the neighborhood? I don't know.
Maybe. I can get rid of it, too.
We can set that aside.
Set it, just leave it.
I'm curious where it comes from and what it might-
Can't remember.
I know, but that doesn't matter.
I'll look it up. Uh, where did you get this?
I could go with that. I could go with striking it. I'm good either way.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to remember where that came from.
By your comment, that's the purpose.
Right, it is an exceptional circumstance.
Um, so this is the one that, these other ones that you just weren't comfortable with, and we can just, again, leave them for now, but "The requested signs are in harmony with the individual building and visually related to the buildings and surrounding development. Requested signs are not judged to present a safety hazard to vehicular or pedestrian traffic." That is one of the most important, I think.
I, C is the only one that's kind of fuzzy.
I mean, we could do is, for B, we could take out the stuff that's highlighted and just say it's gotta be consistent with the purpose and intent of the sign ordinance, because if you go back to the purpose and intent, it's pretty clear.
Right.
It's gotta be, you know, it's gotta protect public health, safety, welfare, it's gotta protect the rights of individual businesses to convey their messages, it's to produce, to improve pedestrian traffic safety, business viability, economic opportunity, encourage compatibility in harmony with surrounding buildings, land, land uses, ensure-
That covers even that fuzzy C too.
Right.
So, I think we cut C. So basically, you say you gotta have what is almost like a variance requirement under A, right? It's like a-
Yep.
A pretty high standard. It has to also be consistent with the purpose and intent, and it has to not present a safety hazard to vehicular pedestrian traffic.
Yep, which again is duplicative, but I, but I think is actually kind of important.
Highlight that one, because that's the most, I mean, it's really the only reason for us denying any of this stuff, so-
To make sure I understand, we're saying, cut the yellow highlighted at the end of Section B, and cut Section C.
Yep. Because C is in the purpose and intent.
Right.
More or less.
Okay.
Protect the public health, safety, and general welfare.
But it is an important one. It's worth it to restate that one, I think.
Encourage compatibility in harmony. It is there. You're exactly right. It's, it's a restatement.
All right, good.
Okay, nonconforming signs. "Any nonconforming sign lawfully existing at the time of adoption of this or subsequent amendments to this section is subject to the following standards." Nonconforming signs accessory to a use- Nonconforming signs accessory to a use..." Can we just take, can we take out the uses? I think
Yes.
by saying it twice, it's really confusing.
It doesn't change anything.
Um, "Accessory to a use shall be removed or replaced concurrently with the, with any expansion of such use."
You're getting...
So, that's the, that's the expansion part of it. "Such nonconforming signs shall be replaced with conforming sign or, uh, conforming sign prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit or any building into which the use is..."
Does it issuance of an occupancy permit for any building?
Um... "Or any building into which the use is to be expanded." Yes?
Which basically means any time an occupancy, I can't even say it, occupancy permit
Strict.
per building is reissued, all nonconformity for signage
It has to expand the use, but, but, so, I think what Jessica's trying to get at, or what this language was trying to get at, is like physically expanding the structure?
Right.
The way this is in Word, it's an or. So, it's occupancy permit or expansion. So, any occupancy permit that's
Yeah, I'm not sure how, I don't...
goes away.
No. Shall be removed or replaced concurrently with any expansion of such use.
Off above. Okay.
Such, I, I think that or in the second sentence is a for. An occupancy permit, permit for any building.
Uh-huh. God, we have a lawyer here.
Right, 'cause you wouldn't, you wouldn't issue a building.
Never would've caught it.
But I don't, but, I, so, I think that clears up the language.
There we go.
I don't know that that's something we wanna do.
I don't know if we do either, but...
I mean, I feel like if somebody has a nonconforming sign on their existing building and they wanna change their structure in conformance with the zoning code, like, I don't know if they lose their sign, right? I don't have a problem with them keeping the nonconforming sign personally.
But isn't it part of our goal, uh, uh?
Yes, our goal, I just...
To gradually bring them in the fold. And then couldn't they, if they wanted to maintain it, go to the findings and, and, you know, see if they could maybe then come before looking for a variance of the ZBA? I mean, that, in this document, there's recourse for them to...
Yeah, but the idea of, what we've done with the special permit is made it a really high standard. So, like, you're, the idea is to craft those sign ordinance so that they can do what we want them to do and not more than that, and that, like, if you don't qualify,
So, maybe we need to make a hole in those findings for preexisting nonconformities that are caught by this, so that that might be a condition by which they go to...
Or we just don't have this language. I mean, think of it from a business point of view. So, they're probably already, oh, you know, they, they'll pay the permit fee, but they have to pay a fee for the permit. Say they have to pay the legal cost for the special permit, legal notifications. So, we're already talking about three hundred bucks at this point. Um, then we're gonna make them go before the ZBA to deal with their signage, which is another permit. It's just, it's not very economic friendly.
So, what are the triggers for...
But, again, it's up to the board to decide what's more important, bringing everybody into line so that they're conforming or allowing nonconforming signs to exist. And it's hard to, and it's hard to make that judgment, 'cause we don't know what that nonconformity is, is it, you know?
Well, that's why I was saying before, like, personally, I'm more uncomfortable where there's a change in the use than where there's an expansion of the same use. But then, I mean, in my scenario of an expansion of the same use, I'm imagining it's the same business, but if it's a different car dealership, I don't know. I mean, it's, there's sort of like different scenarios for the nonconforming use.
All right. How about we highlight it and just say, "Hold"?
Yeah.
That's a tough, that's a really tough question.
But I mean, that's another one where I really think that that's a public input kind of thing. You know, how does the town weigh that? How do you see your... How hard do you wanna push to get signs into compliance if they're already, if they're preexisting nonconforming signs?
Okay. All right. And then finally, penalties. Um, I think right now we don't, it says that there'll be some instruction guidance and first offense warning. I don't know what the fees are right now, 'cause it's not in here.
It doesn't say.
Uh, so it's saying a violation shall be subject to a fine of not more than a hundred dollars per offense. Each day violation constitutes a separate offense.
So, every day it's a hundred bucks until you remedy? But, I mean,
That's for anything under enforcement.
I think probably we can change the language so it's like...
Harry's shaking his head. You need to turn to your...
There's no way I would do that. Charge that kind of money.
Well, no, I think the key is that it's not a violation. I mean, you can put up a sign today that's a violation, and the building commissioner can notify you of that in six months, 'cause they've noticed it. And under this, it's been a violation
For six months.
For six months. I think the point is that it's after you've received notice. Right? 'Cause you would want, but I mean, you, you do, I think, have language in, I think we should have language. It says, you know, the building commissioner shall give, I don't know if we put a time in or say a reasonable time to cure or something like that, right?
Yes.
Especially for a first offense, 'cause you imagine a scenario where someone says, "Your sign's a violation. You've got two weeks to bring it in conformance."
And you've got that same, we have the language already. I can just pull it. "All enforcement will provide instruction, guidance, and first offense warnings with the opportunity for a violation to be corrected prior to any fines being imposed." So, I can just take that. This is existing.
Yes.
Put it into here, and then just in, um, but I feel like there's, I don't know what the fines are now, and I don't know...
Well, we also run into the thing, like, with a lot of the stuff, we don't like putting numbers in, 'cause you have to change it, right?
Right.
But you do wanna make it clear.
I like what you're saying to add that preexisting language in. I think that language is better. But I understand, too, that it's good to kind of be specific, and it, it does deserve to have some teeth, in my opinion. I don't know that that number a hundred is right, but I would add the language in and not strike this bit you have here and leave that for public debate.
Again, anything you want, maybe the public input on, I'll just highlight as yellow.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay. So, add the existing language and then keep what we have here, a violation, and then just highlight the hundred dollar part of it?
Sure.
Harry, speak up if you don't like it.
Yeah, it's good.
Do you have a problem with somebody who wants to have been ordered and given time to take it down, they refuse to take it down?
As long as somebody's got the proper notice and I'm just ignoring you, well, that's a separate issue.
Right.
So, that's okay.
I agree.
Okay. So, I'll keep that highlighted.
Totally. Cause I think...
And then do, do we want to throw in our two cents about what constitutes proper notice for a timeline, like, two weeks, a month?
Well, that's where, I mean, that, that language that we pulled in is pretty vague. It's like reasonable time to remediate or something like that.
I like the word cure.
To be corrected within thirty days or sixty days?
Yeah, that's quite a lot.
That's something, I'm thinking fourteen, twenty-one, something like that, but but I guess it depends, right? I mean, like...
Well, think of a small business. You gotta, all right. So, again, I'm just gonna take the business side here for a second, just to play devil's advocate, but, um, you know, they get a notice, we're only open four days a week. The building inspector gives them something on, you know, Tuesday. They now have until two Tuesdays to figure it out and to replace it. Is that really enough time for a small mom and pop business?
Getting back to the building, well, I guess getting back to the building commissioner issue we had earlier, it's also, if there's a nonconforming sign that's up there for an extra month, it's not really the end of the world. Assuming, again, it's not illuminated with pinwheels and lights and whistles and noise, right? It's outside your house.
And we've got two weeks. Make it three weeks and highlight it yellow so that the public can hammer that one out.
Okay. So...
No, I think that sounds good.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, so add, would you say thirty days and highlight it?
Three, three weeks.
Twenty-one days?
Twenty-one days.
That's fine.
Okay. Uh, that's it for today.
All right.
Oh. Why are we taking this on?
Supreme Court holders do.
I know.
All right.
You're doing an excellent job.
Okay.
Ethics.
So, yep. So, ethics. Hold on, let me just get my paperwork organized here. On to the next thing. Okay.
Three times.
All right, good.
I read it, reread it to make sure I read it right. As I said, it's basically limiting any conversations about any topic that's gonna come before us. Happening here.
Okay. So, this is, um, I, as part of my certification, AICP, I, I'm required to take continuing education classes, and we're required to also take ethics classes as well, and the last session that I sat in on for my ethics credits was about planning board ethics and more about commissioner ethics, not necessarily ethics of, of planners ourselves. The, the American Planning Association, we have our own code of ethics that we adhere to. We review. That's part of the training, is to make sure that we're remembering to do, to do our jobs ethically. And it can be complicated, because there's a lot of different parties and there's a lot of different things that can happen, but I just thought it would be worth reviewing specifically ex parte communication for planning board members. And so, I sent you, I pulled some information off the interwebs and highlighted some certain things, and I hope that you had an opportunity to read them and to just sort of refresh yourself. Um, but really, where this can come down to, and, and some of the examples that they've shown, they, they gave scenarios. They had like a video showing of a commissioner running a meeting, and, you know, basically, you know, like, if, if you're, um, if you're out and about in the community and somebody comes up to you and says, "Hey, I've got all this information on this project that's coming before you next week. Um, you know, I know that there was, um, bicycle accidents in front of there, and I know this, and I'm, you know, you should be aware of that." But they're giving you that information in isolation outside of this public hearing process. That's considered to be an ex parte communication. So, you basically have specialized knowledge that none of your other board members have. And you're coming into the meeting with that influenced information that none of your other board members have and has not been vetted out publicly. It's been sort of this sideline conversation. So, um, you know, again, it's just to make you aware of your role on the board, and when you're out in the community, when you're at the soccer field, when you're out at the grocery store, if you're at a restaurant, if you're at a bar, you know, this is a community that people are very engaged in, and we're very lucky to have, to be in a community where everybody cares so deeply about what's happening here and is really engaged. But just to be cognizant and careful about the types of conversations that you're having about businesses coming before this board before you reach here. And, um, some of the information in this packet recommend things like, if somebody does start talking to you, cut them off and say, "You're welcome to come to the planning board meeting scheduled at this date", and present all of the same information. That's one thing you can do. Um, if they continue and they, and they don't want to adhere to that, then the next best thing that you can do is you can present that information at the board meeting yourself and say, "So-and-so, and it's gotta be on the record, this individual contacted me at this location and presented this information to me, and I wanna make sure that you're all aware of it." Um, it's really important for us to make sure that all of you are on the same page when any proposal is in front of us. And so, that's, I just, you know, wanted to put that information together and just remind you that it can be really hard. You know, it's hard for me, too. And I, you know, I live in this community, too, and I go to all the same places that everybody else does, and people often are coming up to me to talk about what's happening and my opinion, and it's, you know, you have to be just very cognizant and careful about what people are telling you in relation to a project that's coming before you. So, um... So, I'm just trying to, there were some scenarios that were in here, um, that I thought were really good. The other, the other thing that's not having to do with ex parte, but I printed this out, 'cause I thought this was kind of interesting, was the beware of the serial meeting.
This is a constant problem.
So, this is when, say for instance, um, Harry has a question, and he runs into Jesse at the grocery store, and they start talking about something. Well, they're not a quorum, so technically, they're not in violation, right? But then Jesse then goes to James and starts talking about the same thing that Harry just told him. But again, it's not a quorum, so no violation. But the more that that happens, the more of a violation it becomes. And so, you're now sort of going down the line, or, and then, you know, James is now gonna email Jim with that information. Even though you're not all in the same room and you're not breaking that quorum issue, you are violating open meeting law, because you're having this serial conversation. That's a linear conversation amongst yourselves.
People do it intentionally by email sometimes. Like, you'll see boards where, like, the chair will ask somebody's thoughts on something, and they'll send the same email to all four members, but separately. And they think that it's not, because you can't do that by email, all of us, right? The reply all, which gets everyone in trouble, too. You can't do individual, like, conversations about substantive matters when you're sort of like, design is to poll the whole group, and you're just avoiding that, you think, by sending separate emails or talking to people separately or whatever.
It's underhanded.
Yeah.
Did anybody have any questions about any of this material? Did you all read it?
Yes.
You did. Did, were you enlightened? Yes, Harry?
Right, Harry.
All I can say about this whole thing is I got really involved in this kind of thing about three or four years ago. And, uh, it was no fun. I got myself into a mess just by being curious, I guess. And I should've known better.
Well, if you weren't trained and you didn't have any review, then it's, you know, no fault of your own.
I was told by somebody that, uh, somebody substantial, shall we say, told me I could, I could go get information if I wanted to, although there wasn't any, uh, like, three people there or whatever. At the time, uh, this particular billing or whatever you wanna call it, business, wasn't actually applying for anything. But the rumor was that it's, it's gonna be coming down later on, but there was nothing, with nothing really on the books, so I figured, I said to myself, "Well, we're not really taking up anything." So, you know, I should've never did what I did. I mean, I mean, it'll never happen again, for sure, but I just got myself into a mess out of curiosity.
Well, and part of the hard part is like, we all live in town, and you talk about things you don't know what's gonna come before us.
Well, I got a phone call from a lawyer.
You don't even know.
Right. I mean, you could have a conversation with an applicant two years ago about their specific project, and you didn't know that it was a project at the time, and you didn't know what's coming before the planning board, and we all have conversations like that.
I had this guy, this guy, well, it happened twice on, on the same, uh, this, uh, most stop and shop. This guy called me up at the house, and, uh, it's the guy I buy oil from. And before I know it, he's talking about how this is gonna affect his business, and I'm on the phone with the guy. I mean, I'm talking about buying oil. And that turns into, you know, this is gonna do this or that or whatever, and I'm going, "Well, I really can't talk about this, but the guy's bending my ear," so we ended up hanging up. So, then I go to court. Okay? And I go to court, I'm sitting there, and I have a clear blue sky. This lawyer says to me, "Well, you had, you had direct, uh, talks about stop and shop with the, with the oil guy." I'm going, "Well, sorta, but not, not really." You know what I mean? It was like, it was like... And next thing you know, Chris, I'm, I'm over my, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm drawn, I'm needing some air, you know?
Right. So, the key here would be that when that comes before us, you say...
You hang up.
Well, you hang up, right. But if you, I mean, assume a scenario where you can't hang up, they approach you, you know, on the street, and they start saying things to you. As you come here and you disclose it, and that gives the public opportunity to hear what that person's saying and respond to it, if they can or not.
I mean, I've had, I've had so many, so many conversations where I play golf. And for a while there, especially with this one individual, uh, it was like every day this guy just hammered me. You know, every single day. It got to the point where I actually had to tell a prod to get this guy off my back. That's how bad it was.
Well, and, and also know that you have professional staff here, so if you're getting hammered out in the public and people are asking questions about specific proposals, they are welcome to come down to the planning department, review the application themselves, and I'm happy to answer any questions. You know, as the professional staff, I am allowed to have pre-development meetings with applicants before it comes to you. And I hammer out a lot of stuff with them before it comes to you and make them aware of, of what the board is gonna be looking for in specific applications, but that's part of my job. So, I'm not having an ex parte, as long as it's happening in my office. Now, if I start having it down at Mount Tom's, it's a whole nother story.
I had, I had an individual show up at my house. Okay? They wanted to take me on a, on a, a little, uh, automobile ride. So, before, uh, before I got into this guy's car, I called Jessica, remember that? I'm, I'm, you remember that morning? And I said, and I called her and I said to her, "Look, this guy wants to take me for a, you know, for a little trip." And she says to me, "If you were to call me, you know, you know better," something like that. "You know what's right and wrong," and I, of course, I wasn't gonna go, but...
Sounds like the Godfather.
I thought I was gonna call her and just, you know, to verify, 'cause I was... I thought I was going to call her and just, you know, to verify, because I was...
So, anyway, just, just reminder, and I just wanted to, because it was refreshed for me during my own ethics training, I thought it would be good information to pass along to you, and so...
Very awesome. Thank you.
You know, you do, because even, you know, you can also, and should be abiding by the, the code of ethics for planning, so. Um, I do have one more thing. Um, I just want to pass this out. So, this, so there was an industrial zoning, I'm sorry, again, with chaos and the loss of a arts coordinator, I was a little over my head here, and I missed the boat on this one. I'm sorry. Um, I should have notified you earlier. Um...
Didn't it come out much earlier? Like, I saw notice of it.
It came out, it came out earlier from the mayor's office. She did put out a press release. Um, and then I put up something on social media.
That's what I saw.
Yeah, and Libby, Libby was upset that she hadn't been notified, so I don't know. Something happened, but, and, and I think Harry wasn't too psyched either. He would have liked to go. Um, but anyway, so just to under, so you understand where this is coming from. So, the, the governor's office has this community compact program, where they're asking communities and municipalities to sign on to this compact and, um, request assistance on specific things. And so, our mayor had put forth economic development, um, assistance. And so, they came back to us, and I've had some conversations with some folks there about doing a zoning review of our industrial permitting process and comparing us to other municipalities near us to see whether we're stricter, whether, um, you know, we're right in line, and whether that's inhibiting any businesses coming to East Hampton, because our permitting process is tougher or appears to be tougher because of what has to happen on the books. Basically, a special permit process versus either something by right or just a site plan approval. Um, so, we had this conversation with the state like six months ago, and then all of a sudden, this contract showed up in the mayor's office, and the money had to be spent out in like six weeks. So, um, before the end of the fiscal year. So, we've been moving this project really quickly, because the money came and we had to move it forward. So, I'm going to pass out to you, so PVPC, um, is doing the review for us. They held this workshop. We were really trying to target, um, actual industrial businesses to come to talk to us about their experience in the permitting process and what worked and what didn't work. So, that was really our target audience for the, for the forum, was to hear from them. Um, and we had, the Chemmettle was there, because they had recently gone through it. Um, Bernie Gall was in attendance, Dave Boyle was in attendance, um, some city councilors. So, we had a handful of people there, and we had a good conversation. Um, and really, what it came down to, and based on sort of the data that's coming forward, is that we are much stricter than some of our neighboring communities in terms of permitting. So, um, and the developers in their room agreed that really, we should be allowing a site plan approval process in our industrial zone, um, you know, by right process and not going through a special permit process every time, you know? And so, so now, we're gonna, so, I just want to pass this out. This is sort of their analysis matrix, and you can take a look at it.
What's the next step?
The next step is they're going to do a final report, um, by the end of the month. And then, from there, we're going to probably look to getting some small grants that is offered through the state, through PVPC, to do some planning technical assistance and potentially rewrite our table of uses specifically for this section. Um, and I think where we're maybe heading is looking at a tiered system for permitting. So, trying to figure out what those thresholds are that would trigger somebody to go into a higher special permit review process, whether it's square footage, which doesn't, doesn't necessarily make sense to me. I think it's more like traffic impacts and trip generation and, um, some of those more nuisance issues. But, so, you know, I don't know what, what the final zoning will end up being like, but this is at least the first step and first analysis. And the last page is quite interesting, because it's the fee schedule. So, if you look at East Hampton in comparison to our neighboring communities and what they charge for permits, we are so incredibly low.
Wow.
Um, that I think that the board should start looking at this and thinking about, um, you know, how the permit number or permit application fee should change. And really, what it's supposed to cover is my administrative time, whether it's meeting for those preliminary meetings, whether it's meeting with applicants during the process, whether it's drafting the legal notice, sending that out, doing the butter notification. All of that stuff takes time. This covers about three hours of my time, and that's it. And some of these projects, when they're higher thresholds, take considerably more time than that. The smaller ones don't, but the higher ones do. They take, you know, a considerable amount of time. And so, I think that's something for us to think about in terms of, some of this stuff I kind of like with the, um, charging based on the square footage of a new building, because the, the bigger buildings are going to have stormwater, they're going to have much more comprehensive issues than somebody who is just a smaller use. So, anyway, so I just wanted to pass along this. I got a copy of this yesterday. So, look at it, and we can, you know, talk about it in more detail at another time. And I will give you a copy of the report once it comes out. And I apologize again for not being more communicative about the event.
Check that planning board Facebook page. Always on the cutting edge. Anything else?
No.
Anybody can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Wonderful work, as always, folks. Thank you.